Two minutes.
Once again, good morning to everyone. We'll be starting in approximately two minutes.
Yep, eleven o'clock.
Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Committee of the Whole meeting for February seventh, two thousand and twenty-three for the city of Maple Ridge. At this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order. And with that, acknowledge that the city of Maple Ridge carries out its business on the traditional and unceded territory of the Katsi First Nation and the Quantlin First Nation. On the agenda, we have approval of the agenda next.
Thank you, sir. We do have three point one, which is adoption of the minutes.
Like to have a mover to adopt the minutes, please? We'll be using
I just, yeah, it just
hand signals and cards today.
Okay, so what is the process for moving, seconding, voting, putting ourselves on the speaker list today?
Green cards.
Green cards. We're not using the system yet.
Not yet. And apologies, you're stuck with me as corporate officer today, so go please really, really slow today.
Totally fine. Just wanted to make sure we knew the process. Thank you.
Thanks. Would you like me to go over the process, Mr. Chair?
Please.
Okay, before we get started, um, Committee of the Whole is the initial venue for council review of information to ensure that council can debate and vote on issues at a future council meeting. No voting takes place on bylaws or resolutions during Committee of the Whole. This meeting is being conducted through the city's one-meeting platform. However, we are experiencing issues with Prime Gov solution for live meeting management that are still being addressed by the vendors. So in the interim, we are not going to be using the system for voting. Instead, council has been provided with voting cards. Green is in favor, red is opposed, yellow is a point of order. I will manually, manually take note of votes and log them into the system. And to be put on the speaker list today, please physically raise your hand so that the chair can add you to the list. For members of the public who would like to speak during the community forum, if you are participating electronically, please register as a speaker by clicking on the microphone icon in the one-meeting portal and turn on your camera and clearly state your name and city of residence before beginning your comments. If you are attending the meeting in person, please come forward to the podium when the mayor invites speakers and clearly state your name and city of residence before beginning your comments.
Thank you, sir. And with that, move to approve the agenda, please. Counselor Carrera, seconded by Mayor Rumi. All those in favor? That carries. Thank you. Adoption of the minutes. Motion is to adopt the minutes for the Committee of the Whole held on January twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-three. Moved by Counselor Schiller, seconded by Counselor Ten. All in favor? Thank you. That carries. And our first delegation of the day as my screen changes is coming to us from School District forty-two. Would you like to introduce, or shall I?
Yes, sir. Item four point one is the delegation from a school district forty-two, and we have Kristi Lordson and Lisa Shepherd, joined by students from the school district to share the story and message behind the art piece created to welcome Ukrainian refugees, and that is item four point one.
Thank you, ladies.
Good morning. Uh, my name is Kristi Lordson, and I'm a helping teacher for gifted learners in School District forty-two. And with me today is my friend, mentor, and artist whom I admire, Lisa Shepherd, and my students Ella, who will be speaking today, as well as Arin and Kai, Taya, and Clara, and Chelsea, and their parents and grandparents who've come with them. And we are here today to gift to the city of Maple Ridge this art piece behind me, behind us, which was created by these students, as well as some other students, and also some students from ST forty-three were involved in this project. And it was created last spring. I'll be explaining how the project came to be. Lisa will speak to the inspiration and meaning of the design, and Ella will speak to the student experience. And Yusuf, who is also involved in this project, may also say a few words. So first, I would like to acknowledge and express my gratitude that we could collaborate on this project on the unceded, traditional, and ancestral lands of the Katsi First Nation and Quantlin First Nation. I also want to acknowledge and lift my hands to the Maiti community, and particularly Lisa and her family, for the generosity of teaching that they have shared with me and ST forty-two students over many years. So this project began when I invited Lisa to lead a five-session program for some of our students in the district to learn and practice the art of Maiti beadwork that you see on this beautiful piece. It happened that the program was set to run in April last spring, not very long after war began in Ukraine and refugees began to arrive in Canada. I had also seen in the local newspaper an article about a group of Maple Ridge citizens, of which Yusuf was one, who were working to welcome Ukrainian refugees to our community. I had also seen a CBC News story that described how indigenous people in Canada felt a strong connection to the Ukrainian people and were reaching out in support. I had the idea that we might connect our artwork with Lisa to creating something that would communicate to Ukrainian newcomers that we supported and cared for them. When Lisa agreed, I reached out to Yusuf, whose name was in the article, and he immediately responded and became involved with our students. And Lisa began to envision the design for the project. So I'm going to turn it to Lisa now to explain the design.
Mr. Speaker, before I begin, may I approach you to give an offering of tobacco?
I'd be honored.
Thank you.
Thank you very much on behalf of Mayor and Council.
Tanshikewao. Nisigasan Lisa Shepherd. Amiskwchi Waskahigan Ochinia Makari Niwakken Katsi and Quantlin Traditional Unceded Shared Territory. So my name is Lisa Shepherd. I'm originally from Edmonton, and I now am very grateful to be here on the traditional unceded shared territory of Katsi and Quantlin First Nations. Sometimes when we try to translate our language into a colonial language, it's very difficult because the language has in it understandings and worldviews that don't necessarily live in the colonial space. And so I'll just explain to you, Nisigasan Lisa Shepherd, what I said is my name is Lisa Shepherd. You probably gathered that. But the literal translation to that is my belly button's name is Lisa Shepherd. It's okay to laugh because it sounds funny in English. But the worldview where that comes from is the idea that when I was born, I was attached by this umbilical cord to my mother. And once upon a time, she was attached to her mother and she to her mother, all the way back to the very first woman. So that's where that teaching comes from. When our babies have their umbilical cords fall off, they dry up and fall off. Some of our people will take those and save those umbilical cords, and they'll bury them beneath a tree. And what that does is wherever our babies, when they grow up and they go out into the world as adults, wherever they go, they can always find their way home. When I came here to British Columbia from Alberta, I was eighteen years old. I left behind everything that I knew. I left behind my family. I left behind all my friends and my land. I was really scared, but I had the opportunity for a better life. No one in my family had gone on to post-secondary, and I was accepted with a small little five-hundred-dollar bursary into what was then the Fraser Valley College, Community College. So I made that trek. I carried with me intergenerational trauma. The truth is, is that Canada has fought one war on Canadian soil, and it was against Maiti people. So my ancestors had their homes burned down. My dad was not afforded a complete education because he wasn't allowed to receive that as a Maiti man. So I carry with that, with me, this intergenerational trauma. But I also am so proud of the resilience that our people have. When the Ukrainian people needed to find refuge, so many indigenous people felt that connection with them because we understand what it means to leave behind your land. It's more than just leaving behind the people. It's leaving behind everything that you know, all the plants, all the animals, the land itself, the water, everything. So we have that connection. Long before that happened, indigenous people have worn these scarves. Some people call them babushkas. We call them a kokum scarf. Kokum is our word for grandmother. And so we wear these kokum scarves. When the war in the Ukraine happened, these scars became very prominent for our people. It was our way of saying to the Ukrainian people who are here, we see you. You are kin. We love you, and you're welcome here. And so we also know in our, in our community that our young people, our children, or even our babies, they come to us with knowledge. And it's really important knowledge because they more recently came from spirit world, and so they are closer to that pure understanding of that knowledge. So when they speak and they have things to tell us, we need to listen. Our young people are so intelligent. They just, they, they're driven by their hearts when they tell us about identity, when they tell us about love and war and acceptance. When they tell us about so many things, it's important that we listen to them because they are our way forward to a good future. And so that's all that I have to say right now. It's such an honor to be here in the company of these students and to have been able to work with them. I'm really grateful to everybody here for listening to what they have to say. I'm going to turn it over to one of our young people now, to Ella. Big Witch Marcy, can I ask you to know my relations?
Thank you.
Hello, I am one of the students who worked on the project for on the bead of flowers. I love learning about the Maiti people and how to bead. I hope this project welcomes all refugees that come to Canada. Thank you for being here today.
That was wonderful, Ella. Thank you.
Could I just read, um, the message that all the students collaborated on to put inside of these cards? So the image of the artwork Yusuf assisted us with this. And, um, what was, what happened with these is we couldn't give one of these large pieces of wood to every Ukrainian newcomer, but we wanted them to receive a card with the image. And on the back, it has the story of the card. And inside, there's a message from the student artists, and it was also translated into Ukrainian. Yusuf connected us with Halia Herniak and Natalia Ryblaski. And Halia actually is a former teacher in our school district. But the students wanted to say to Ukrainian people, we want to welcome you to Canada and to our community, and we hope that you will enjoy your stay here, however long it is. We want you to know that Canada is a safe place for you and your family. We support Ukraine. We feel very sad that Ukrainian people are experiencing this war, and we hope that your homeland will be safe again for you soon. We also hope that your family members and friends who are still in Ukraine will stay safe until you can see them again. We believe that all humans are related and connected.
Thank you for that. And if I may, take the opportunity to kind of wrap it up. I can't thank you enough for the time that you've taken and the effort that you've put in to create such a heartfelt, beautiful piece of art that was so warmly welcomed. Every single one of the Ukrainian newcomers that were given the card and read the message in their own home language were so touched. It was, it was amazing to them to have that. And as someone who left my land and came to a new land, you can imagine how valuable that is and how far that goes. So thank you for putting all that time and effort. And just before I, I thank everyone else, I want to make sure to mention that the cards were printed by Sureprint, who absolutely refused to charge us. Uh, the Ridge Meadows Ukrainian Welcoming Committee luckily had enough support within the community to have the funds. Uh, but the gentleman, I, I don't want to murder his name. I know I will mispronounce it. Our Ashraf? Never lost at Sureprint. He was instrumental, and again, he refused to accept any sort of payment for that, and that speaks to the community that we're in and how great the people of Maple Ridge and Pitt Meadows are. Uh, on behalf of Mayor and Council, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank and raise my hands to Ms. Shepherd for thank you. And I raised my hands out of gratitude and respect for your efforts, time in service of our community, and for enriching our lives with sharing your experiences, your knowledge, and your abilities. Thank you. Ms. Lordson, thank you for your dedication and the outstanding work that you do with our brilliant young minds here in the community. We're very lucky to have you on our team. It was an absolute honor and delight to work with both of you. But to our exceptional young students who actually did the legwork on this one and put this artwork together, picked out the designs and, and had those many, many hours. Thank you. Thank you for ensuring that we as adults are aware of what's important and what to prioritize when we sometimes get clouded with our day-to-day businesses. Not only is your artwork gorgeous, it carries such meaning as it stands testament to why this community that we're in right now is at least I'd like to say the best place on earth, and it's because of its people. That's why it is the best place on earth. Having had the privilege of visiting you twice while you were carrying out this beautiful masterpiece, I'm optimistic that our future is in good hands. Thank you. With that, I'll turn it over to Mayor and Council for comments and questions. Counselor Carreras.
Thank you. It's tough to follow. Hoping someone else will be a little faster on the green, green card. Um, I just want to say a heartfelt thank you, Marcy, for, for your words, for, um, you know, introducing yourself and your language and then explaining it. I'm, I laugh at the belly button because I love it. I love it. I love the connection. I love the story that you tell and why we say that, and it's beautiful. So thank you for sharing that with us. And, and, um, I, I want to say uh, thank you for, for once again reminding us because I think it's so important to someone who's, you know, been at school board. I am, I am so with you when it comes to our youth and how powerful they are and how brilliant they are. And we always need to find opportunities to make space to hear their voice because it's truly how we're going to move towards a, a, a space of the future. They are, they are these incredible leaders, and I've, I've always hated it when we, when we say, oh, the, the future generation or the future leaders, and I've always said, no, there's leaders now. They are the leaders now. They may be younger than us, but they are leaders in their own right, and they are powerful. Um, and I want to say thank you once again. You have done some really beautiful work within our community, in particular with the school district. Um, and thank you for, for using art to bring people together. And art really does have a place in our community, in our cultures, in our world, because it is beautiful, but it does have that way of bringing people together. And when you're talking about um, welcoming Ukrainians in, it's not about language when it comes to art. It's not about the words. It's about the feeling and the heart and the passion that we have. So thank you so much to, to you and Kristy for taking on this project, and thank you to all of the students that participated. It's a, a absolutely beautiful, and, and thank you. It's gonna really have a great place in our community. Thank you.
Thank you for those words.
Thank you, Counselor Carreras. Chair recognizes Counselor Ten.
Thanks, Chair. Um, and I'll keep my remarks short. I think Counselor Carreras beautifully articulated everything. I think I'll just say today to the young folks in the room, thank you for taking a bit of time to come and spend time with us at council today. We really appreciate it. And when, you know, I and we look at the art, you know, I'm gonna in C Hall, you know, I'm gonna remember that. This is, this is why we're here. We're here. We're here. In our, in our daily lives, we mess around a lot of words. We try and bae around a lot of words, but like Counselor Carreras said, like, you know, that, that, that means no worries. So thank you. Thank you for visiting us today. Thank you for your work, and please come back again. Please come back and grace our, our council meeting halls. It's much better if you're here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Ten. The Chair recognizes Mayor Rumi.
What can I say that hasn't already been said? Uh, other than, look, I just want to echo what my colleagues have been saying. Uh, the comments are relevant, and especially in today's world. It's a, it's another reminder how our cultures are able to work together, right? I, I, I love the words that you're using when you talk about the relationship between the Ukrainian people and the Maiti people. Ukraine is all the way on the other side of the world, right? And I think we could all do better by learning those lessons that we see right here today and the youth that are involved with this. I don't, I don't, I, I hope they recognize, I hope you all recognize the power of what you did today. And to get to this point, uh, it's, it's an amazing thing to show the world and to show from little old Maple Ridge that people matter, no matter where they are in this world. And we have the ability to, to make change by touching each other, you know, and it reaches across the globe. And that is something that I hope, not only that you continue to do, but I hope as adults and as leaders that we take that message out and find ways to do the exact same thing that you're doing. So thank you very much for everything that you've done, all of you, and I'm gonna stop now, but, um, thank you. It's greatly appreciated.
Thank you, Mayor Rumi. Uh, seeing no other speakers. Uh, lastly, I'd like to recognize that we do uh, also, or did work quite closely with other individuals who are not in the room, including former Counselor Gordy Robson, uh, Mr. Tom Bowen, and many other, uh, individuals and organizations in the community that came together to make the Ridge Meadows Ukrainian Welcoming Committee such a success that we actually, uh, ended up going above and beyond our capacity and, and our ability to function as volunteers to the point that now there are professionals that are paid by the government to take over the model that we started and continue to work. So uh, again, thank you to the community. Thank you to everyone that's been involved. Ms. Shepherd, please.
I just want to say thank you, all my relations and equalcy. That's all we have to say.
Ms. Lordson?
Sorry, they just have a couple of comments.
I would also like to say thank you very much for creating the, the space and the time for us today. Uh, we're very grateful for that. And I have a technical question. Do we leave our gift here with you today?
Mr. Hartman?
What's the process now? Because our hope is that as a council at some point, uh, soon you'll decide on a place where this can be displayed in the community. But my question is, what shall we do with it in the meantime?
Through the Chair, uh, to members of council and the community. Um, I think it's, uh, coming upon us at the moment. If we take a quick pause for council, we'll do a photo op with the, uh, piece of art, if you're comfortable with that. And then I would suggest you leave the artwork with us, and we will find a suitable location. And when that is ready, we'll let you know, and then we'll set up an opportunity to have that publicly displayed, whether it's in the lobby of City Hall or in another one of our facilities. So our facility staff, through Stefan Labun, uh, will, uh, coordinate that at his end.
That sounds wonderful. And we also, uh, hope that the, the text that is, explains the art piece could be printed on a, a card along with the message that the students wanted to relate to Ukrainian people viewing it. So perhaps we could talk about that at some other time. Yusuf has my contact.
Thank you. And with that, if I may, ask members of council to, uh, follow instructions to do a photo with the students, of course.
Yes, with the students as well, if, um, the guardians are okay with, and the students themselves are okay with being in the photo.
Congratulate here.
So, okay.
Now, the question, is this more fun or is school more fun? So now that we've, uh, had dessert, if you will, uh, let's, uh, get down to the meat and potatoes of our day. Uh, with that, Mayor and Council will be moving to Planning and Development Services, item five point one.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a reserving application, two thousand and twenty-two, two, three, four, RZ, Portent two, four, three, six, nine, hundred and tenth Avenue, and this is a reserving from RS three to RS one D, and Ms. Wendy Cooper is going to be presenting on this.
Ms. Cooper?
Are we going to have the slides go up or? Perfect. Um, so before you is application, um, number two thousand and twenty-two, four thirty-four RZ, and as introduced by, um, the corporate officer. The application, existing OCP is low-density residential and conservation. The proposed OCP is, um, not a change, but some boundary adjustments between the low density residential and the conservation boundaries. The existing zoning is RS three, single-detached rural residential. And the proposed zoning is RS one D, single-detached half-acre residential with a density bonus to RSB, single-detached medium-density residential. The site area is approximately one point zero eight hectares, approximately two point six eight acres, and the proposed lot yield at this time is eight lots. And before you is the subject property on a hundred and tenth Avenue, and the development is a continuation of the, um, zoning and lots that are occurring along the hundred and tenth Avenue corridor. And this gives you a high-level, um, context map for the official community plan and the neighborhood, um, plan, which is evolving as the single-family lots and homes are being developed along a hundred and tenth Avenue. The development proposal is to rezone to RS one D, single-detached half-acre residential to permit a future subdivision of approximately eight single-family lots. In order to do so, the applicant is, um, proposing to utilize the Albany, Albany density bonus option to RS one B, single-size lots with a minimum, um, lot area of five hundred and fifty-seven meters squared. The, in order to do this, there's a density bonus contribution of thirty-one hundred dollars per lot. The current OCP designation is low-density resident gen- dential. I can't speak today. Support the proposed RS one D zone. Development completes, as said before, the Cameron Road extension portions of the site have watercourses, steep slopes that are environmentally sensitive. Um, and the OCP amendment will require to include conservation areas based on ground trooping of the site. And the OCP amendment will require to include conservation areas based on ground truthing of the site. This application is subject to the community amenity contribution at a rate of $7,100 per lot for an estimated $56,000. And this would be subject to change if, at the time of third reading, this was to change. This is the environmental context map showing the watercore setbacks and the proposed development site outside of that. And this is the proposed subdivision plan. Again, needing to be confirmed through all of the environmental and engineering and feasibility studies. And before you, on the slide, is the recommendations that are included in the package.
Thank you, Ms. Cooper. And with that, the motion on the floor is to move forward the application to the council meeting of February 14, 2023. Moved by Councilor Dewick, seconded by Councilor Carreras. Speakers list for questions. Chair recognizes Mayor Rumi.
Thank you very much for the presentation. While it's still in early phases, I think the question that's gonna be on everybody's mind is the environmental aspect of that. Just looking at the layout of the watercourses, the watercourse and what looks to be a lake? If that's what it was, was that a lake?
Through the Chair to the Mayor. No, there is not a lake. It's just on this slide, on the OCP map, and it looks like a water body, but it isn't a lake. And through the environmental review, it will determine all of the water features on the property and the required environmental setbacks and compensations that would be required of this development.
So, one of the things that I did see on there was a fish-bearing stream. And that's gonna be a little bit tricky. And I understand now it has to be rezoned and it has to come back to council to ensure that it's done properly. And I guess from my perspective, that's something that I want to make sure that we get right, rather than create a whole kerfuffle. We know it's environmentally sensitive, the slopes. We've had some challenges in the past with slopes. So, it'll be interesting to see how those pieces are gonna come together. But we have to do this right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Rumi. Just a quick reminder that committee of the whole is questions of clarification. Questions of clarification, rather than commentary. Just a quick reminder. Chair recognizes Councilor Tan.
Could staff speak a little bit to sort of the, could you just run by me again, the sort of the OCP designation for this area? And what, so what the, what the future plans pre-me, previous council direction has been for this area? What I'm getting that at is I'm a little bit concerned about the proximity of this site into eight subdivided lots. It's very close to Kanaka Creek. It's in a fairly, it's in a very rural area. Not in a larger Albin context, but at least that portion of Albin is fairly, is still fairly close to Kanaka Creek. I'm, you know, and sort of where the larger context of where I'm going with this is that, you know, I think our council direction has been that we want, we are excited about multifamily development in the town center. And this development, this subdivision will be very car-centric. It is very close to Kanaka Creek. It will add to traffic pressures in that area. So, maybe, maybe staff can speak. And but I wasn't around for previous council discussions around this, this direction. So, maybe staff could fill me in around that or information that could help me.
Through the Chair to Counselor Tan. Can I just go back to the OCP layer? Just back?
One sec.
Sure.
And if I may, just quickly interject, this is for first reading. And so, when would the application have been received for this particular property?
The application date? I don't have the application date before you, but it was received, I believe, in November of 2022. So, to give you a quick synopsis of your question. The area is located in the Albion area. And the Albion area plan provides is the local area plan for this area. And within the local area plan, it provides the broad brush planning for the area that was through a public consultation process when it occurred. And so, with that, the low, the low-density residential has identified this property to facilitate single-family homes. And through that, there's a density bonus that is supported through the official community plan to allow for a density bonus contribution to go to smaller houses. And this area has been developing to the RS1D lot. So, the property to the west of this property that has been developed, that was developed a couple of years ago in 2019 to do the same single-family homes and the same zoning. And the property to the east is rezoned to this, that was rezoned in 2022 to the same RS1D with a density bonus to RS1B. And the properties at 11045 1160 and 11040 Cameron Court are all zoned in compliance with the OCP to facilitate RS1D and density bonus to RS1B, as well as the lot, which isn't on this picture at the end of the road. So, this neighborhood, there's a few properties that aren't under rezoning or redevelopment to the emerging neighborhood of RS1D with a density bonus through RS1B. And through this process, we, the environmental staff within the planning department has, as well as the parks department, have looked at these properties through significant environmental studies to protect on the Cameron Court property. At the 11060, there is a large part of the northern part of that property that has been dedicated to the city as part to protect the creek and the fish-bearing creek of it. There is a significant amount of work through the parks and our environmental department with the proponents on it. And through the development of all of those properties, including, one would anticipate, this property ours, the protection of the water, water and natural feature elements. So, it is a primary goal of the Albion area plan to protect the environmental features of this area. And, and the goal is the dedication of land to the city for protection.
Thank you, Ms. Cooper. Counselor Tan, just being cognizant of time as I'm being reminded by the clerk. Do you have any more questions?
That's fine for now.
We can pick them up on round two as well, if you would like. With that, we'll move to Counselor Carreras.
Thank you. My questions have been answered. It was sort of like what, because all that land around there is under application process. And again, all those applications were started before us. So, you've gone through and sort of explained what those applications were. And then my question is, is the, the large Kanaka Springs development is next to this? Isn't it or close? Like, that whole area has already been approved for? Is it?
Through the Chair to Counselor Carreras. I'm not sure of the, which development Kanaka Springs is, so.
Okay. Just trying to figure out where this is in context of, again, previous council, just trying to get caught up to speed as to where we are with things. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Carreras. Chair recognizes Counselor Shiller.
Thank you, Chair. Through to staff, I do just have some questions. I can, this is sort of the first time that I've seen a redevelopment in this situation. That's clearly a, clearly a neighborhood in transition with the sort of older rural properties on one side of the road and then the development going on on the other side. So, I do just have a few general questions about how this process works. So, in the OCP currently, this area is zoned for low density. And then the city is offering this, this option for density bonusing. Can you just explain to me like the intention behind offering the opportunity to provide more density in an area that was previously identified for low density? I'm just struggling to understand.
Through the Chair to Counselor Shiller. I will try and answer that question. So, through the development of the area plan, the Albion area plan, the density bonus is a contribution to the city for amenities. Through, so we have a fund where the money, the money goes to. And it's to support infrastructure of specific elements that have been identified to receive that density bonus. So, it's not just giving, if you pay, you get more density. It's also looking, in order to do that, it's to protect more of the natural environment as an offset. So, the, the process, I'm, I would seek further clarification from you on what you're looking for in the process. Okay.
Ms. Carter?
And I would look, because Chris, Ms. Carter was part of that process.
Yeah. Good morning. So, I can provide a bit of the background context and I think it might get to the root of your question. So, the Albion area plan has had a number of looks by council. It was originally a guide plan back in the 1990s. When we did the OCP, it got adopted as an area plan and embedded into the official community plan. And then I'm going by memory here, about 10 years ago. And that's a total ballpark. We received a request from some property owners in the area to take a look at increasing the density in this part of Albion. The council at the time directed that we do a public consultation. So, we went out and we met with the community. And we came back and said, yes, there was an appetite to changing the density. But the, the community did not want to see multifamily in that particular stretch because it was low density. It was originally intended to be roughly quarter-acre lots. The community did support going to smaller single-family. They're not the very small single-family. There are RS1Bs, so those are a decent-sized lot. But at the time, there was a lot of conversation in the neighborhood about, yes, they want density, but at the same time, they also desired a lot of amenities. And so, that's how we landed on saying we're going to allow for smaller lots in exchange for density bonus. And, and the rates are embedded right in, in a bylaw. And it was also at the same time, we, it was a bit of a pilot where we introduced the CAC, so the Community Amenity Contributions for Developments in Albion as well. So, in answer to your question, we went through full consultation and we landed on density bonus to offset the demands for amenities that were occurring at the same time.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Carter. That's very, that is very helpful as I just seek to understand the, the sort of the bigger reasonings behind some of these things. Just one more quick question in this round then. I noticed that the 1/10th Avenue is unpaved. And I'm just seeking to understand sort of how that fits in with this development that's clearly going on around it. You know, does, does the city have a plan on the books to pave that road? Is that something that development contributes to? Or maybe you could just provide a bit more information about that.
I would refer to the engineering.
Thank you. And so, through, through the Chair to Counselor Shiller. So, as part of this whole area, you've noticed there's a number of developments in the area on 1/10th. And the city is working with each of those developers as part of their off-site servicing requirements for paving Nashville to the road. So, that's something we're working to coordinate and trying to phase that as developments come online and available so that we're not tearing road up and road up in the process. So, and we have a coordinated works agreement and works approach to that. And so, you'll start seeing portions of that road get paved with an excellent bid as it develops.
Thank you. So, is it that the city would pave 1/10th and then the developers would bring the asphalt out to meet that road? Is that correct?
No. So, as part of their off-site requirements as the developments, they will be required, the developers will be required to pave those sections of 1/10th as well, as well as their onsite. And so, that's just take some coordination on our behalf to make sure we do that at the right time.
Right. Thank you very much.
Mr. Goddard, did you want to provide further clarification?
I just have one point to remind everyone that this land is in the urban boundary. So, this is urban development. And that's what it's designated for in the area plan. As also, these lots are quite large by today's standards. They're RS1B lots, that's a minimum of 6,000 square feet. We rarely even create these sized lots in most of the city now because of the cost and the value of that land. So, although they've gone from quarter acres, they're still an awfully large lot. There's about eight of those per acre. It's not like when we get into Albion, where there's up to 20 or so lots per acre. So, these are fairly large lots by today's standards and they'll be fairly large homes on them. Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll go to second round and the Chair recognizes Counselor Carreras.
Sorry, just, just really quickly, and it may just be because it's first reading and not second reading. There's no, and again, I know it's only a few lots, but they're all single-family lots. Any input from the school district? Just understanding that all the schools around there, or will that come in second reading?
Through the Chair to Counselor Carreras. If this is given first reading of the bylaw as part of our referral process, this will be referred to the school district because there's an official community plan amendment to it and it's a legislative requirement.
Okay. So, so input from the school district would come in second reading. Okay, that's what I thought. I just wanted to double check. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Carreras. Chair recognizes Counselor Tan.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, staff. And I'm, I understand, I understand that this area is within urban containment boundary and understand the larger context of the Albion plan. I'll save that, and I'll, I'll just put out my concern and then staff can give me information around that because I'm not sure which direct question to ask. I think my nervousness around it is around the fact, or you can hear, my concern is around the fact that even though the developer may pay for paving the road, it's up to us to maintain the road. It's up to us to maintain streetlights, maintain street sidewalks, and maintain all the other infrastructure that we know costs. This will continue to cost the city. And I'm, I'm understanding that there have been lots on either side that have been subdivided already. But I'm also concerned that this, this property doesn't take us in the direction that council has set out to go out to. So, maybe, maybe, maybe engineering can speak to maybe the cost of maintaining this infrastructure over X period of time and then what that would look like for our, for the city?
Through the Chair to Counselor Tan. With any new infrastructure that's built through development, the after-period of time, one-year maintenance period, the city does adopt it and take that over. It becomes part of our financial plan and is reflected in the, the monies that the city collects through our municipal property taxes. So, as with every other street in this area, the city will maintain it. The city does currently maintain 1/10th Avenue. It will be to a higher standard with the curbs and sidewalks and streetlights and street trees and so forth. Thank you.
Does that answer your question, Counselor Tan? Seeing no one else for speakers list, I'll add myself with firstly, I'd like to thank staff for the addition to the agendas that shows where the access to the application is going to be, the service requirements, and of course, whether it is in a floodplain or not or within the Fraser sewer area. That's very helpful and that enables us to move forward on applications rather quickly. And with that in mind, has the same density since we were speaking about the neighboring properties that we've seen in those created much in the way of issues for parking, for example. Have we seen a significant amount of complaints coming from neighborhoods with similar density or from that area with similar density that we know of?
Through the Chair to, to, to the Chair is, I'm not aware of it. And it would be a question. And it would be a question for the bylaws department and I'm not aware of any complaints. But, and this is in a neighborhood of transition, so the, the houses are under construction.
Thank you. And I asked my question because of Mr. Goddard's comment about the size of the lot. This is half acre lot, so they're quite sizable. And with that, would the R S one D zoning allow for a secondary suite and/or a detached garden suite? Mr. Goddard?
Through the chair, I just wanted to remind you that we're moving from half acre lots to smaller lots. So these are still R S one B lots, they're six thousand square feet, five hundred and fifty seven meters squared. You can park two cars in the garage and two cars on the driveway, at least as expected, I would say with this form of development. The urban roads will have to be built with the development. And then there will be some minimal, but there will be some road parking available as well. It's open to the public visitors and that. There's no visitor component with single family homes, of course. But this neighborhood is in transition. Not a lot has been built. Their pump stations required to really get people living in that area and that's still in, in work. So the applications that you see and the subdivisions you see have been approved, but they're probably not built and occupied yet. But that'll be coming up in twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four, I would think. Thank you.
Thank you. And to the secondary suite or detached garden suite?
They are allowed suites and I think the D G Ss are allowed to be in the R S one B zone, the bigger lots, yes.
Thank you for that. Thank you. Those are, well, one of my questions as well. So with that, we'll call the question. All those in favor of moving this forward to the February fourteenth meeting? That carries. Thank you very much. Moving to item five point two.
Thank you, sir. Item five point two is application twenty twenty-three eleven R Z for two two four nine zero two two five zero four and two two five one four one twenty-first avenue and one two zero eight five H Street, which is a rezoning for, from R S one to R M two. And Ms. Cooper is also doing this presentation. Give me one second, Ms. Cooper.
The application before you is twenty twenty-three dash zero one one R Z and as described by our corporate officer. Apparently, I should press right button. So the application information, the existing O C P is medium and high-rise apartment. The proposed O C P is medium high-rise apartment. The existing zoning is R S one, which is single detached residential. The proposed zoning is R M two, which is medium density apartment residential. The site area is approximately zero point three four hectares or point eight five acres. And the proposed unit count is a hundred and twenty-eight units. This is the subject properties within the downtown area. It's an area in redevelopment with similar sized buildings. And this is the official community plan context map showing the medium and high-rise apartment within that area. The neighborhood map showing the Metro Vancouver housing to the left, to the west or the left of it. To the south is a market single apartment as well as to the east. The development proposal is to rezone to R M two medium density apartment residential to permit a six-story apartment building with a hundred and twenty-eight units with two hundred and four meters approximately of outdoor amenity space that would be in keeping with the sighting of the Metro Vancouver's outdoor open space to the west. The current O C P as stated is medium and high-rise apartment, which supports the R M two zone. The proposed parking is contained within two levels of underground parking access via the lane to the south. Minor setback variance proposed to accommodate the building design and to accommodate the location of the outdoor amenity space, which is, was a key component with the application moving forward. That staff wanted the building to mirror what was happening to the, the metro van as well as in doing that, we wanted to see that there were three bedroom units included in the development. So on the site map before you, where the outdoor amenity space is in the southwest quadrant of the building is the proposed three bedroom units that will be stacked. So each three bedroom unit will go up. And the recommendations before you.
I'll entertain a motion to move this forward to our next meeting at February fourteenth. Moved by councillor Carreras, seconded by councillor Ten. Speakers list for questions of clarification, please. Chair recognizes councillor Carreras.
Thank you. I do have a question. I know this is for questions only, but I, I'm sorry, Chair. I just need to see it. My gosh, there's three bedrooms in here. Really excited. See, something else agrees. Like the three bedrooms. I know I have those questions only. I just have a quick question about a statement that's, that's in this package. And it's the following O C P policies apply three dash three two. And it's the last half of it. So it, it just, it talks about, we support the provision of affordable rental and special needs housing throughout the district. Where appropriate, this provision of affordable rental, special needs housing will be a component of area plans. I'm, I'm just curious why that statement reflects this development? Because am I missing? Like, they're not rentals. They're mark?
They, they aren't rentals. They can be rentals and they're.
Private rentals, but it's not.
It's not. It's that they included the three bedrooms for family units. And it was a huge part of this application coming forward.
And that's why that statement was because of the three bedroom, which.
Yes. It, it provides the, the family context to this area and staff were very supportive of moving the building at a conceptual level because of that and having that open space with the metro van building to the west.
Okay, so it's the three bedroom piece that makes it. Okay. For everybody, it's three bedroom that makes it special housing, which is good. Anyhow, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Carreras. Chair recognizes councillor Ten.
Thanks, Chair. I'm similarly excited about the three bedroom component. And I'm, I'm curious if there's anything that, I'm curious, I'm curious about the number. And just state all right, I don't think it's enough. Because right now what we're seeing is I did a math and the thirty-two percent, thirty-three percent of the units in this building are two or three bedroom or what comes considered family units. And which leaves sixty-seven percent of them being essentially one bedroom units. And there's no, you know, there's no way our community is made of sixty-seven percent of people or households who only need, only one bedroom. So I'm looking at this and, and, and when I look at what other municipalities do in terms of their unit mix requirements, and I don't think this is good enough. Maybe that, that I'll take that, be careful of you, a little harsh. I just, I think in terms of where, what this, this is, in terms of clarification, I guess in terms of like where, what are, like, what are our regulatory, I mean, at this point, like, what is the appropriate time for, like, for a clear feedback to developer that we'd like to see? Or we, I, we maybe would like to see an increase in the, in the unit count of family units. And what legislator, and I'm also really careful about what staff have said to me and to us, no late hits to developers. So I just want to be real, just want to state up right sort of where we are at right now and clear, be clear like, at what, what regulatory sort of measures do we have, if any, to enforce a, like, a larger count of two and three bedroom units?
Mr. Goddard, please.
Thank you, council. These are very good questions and they're really a function of your new council coming in with the older policies being in place from previous councils. We are hoping at your business planning sessions, you'll be giving more guidance on what your priorities are for housing. And that way we can then come back to you and set more targets, maybe is what you want to go. But it's not a good idea to change policy and direction on the back of an individual application. That's where we struggle and we get the complaints about late hits. Very good points you're raising. I understand them and agree with many of them. But we have a couple of applications here today that have been through councils before. And these issues were not raised. We don't have a strong basis for requiring housing rentals, special needs elder. There's policies in the O C P, but we do not have the actual direction from council to negotiate these in the life of an application. We will in the future, if that's your direction, we'd be happy to do that. But for the moment, these applications are coming to you through a process that councils have proved earlier. And this one and the following one are coming up, you know, getting to the end of their process more than the beginning. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Goddard.
Thanks. And I'll just, I'll keep it quick. I think, you know, and I, I really bear, I really think about what staff have said about no late hits. And just with, and particularly with this, with this application, we're not even at first reading yet. And so I understand, and I, so I just really want to be clear on what mechanisms we have as a council to, you know, for an applicant. I don't think this, I don't think this is a late hit.
You're, you're exactly right for this one. The next item is going for approval for the development permit and all that. And it's going to have a similar problem, I think. But this one, yes, we're hearing your comments and we can certainly go back to the applicant at this point. It's good to raise them now. But for the future, I think council should, as we could talk about housing policy for this council, we should set some guidelines and parameters and targets that we can achieve with the applicants early on. So everybody knows what the game is. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Goddard, for that clarification. Do I see any further speakers for questions of clarification on this application? Seeing none, all those in favor of moving it to our February fourteenth meeting? That carries. Thank you very much, council. Item five point three, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Item five point three is application twenty twenty zero six two. And this is a D V P D P for an unaddressed lot at two two three four seven hundred and seventeenth avenue and two two three four nine North Avenue. And Mr. Goddard is going to be doing this presentation.
Mister Goddard?
Thank you.
Give me one second, Mr. Goddard. I'm going to get this up on the screen for you.
Great. Thank you. This is an application, a big, big building down in our town center. Very important. This is the place where we want this sorts of development to occur. It's mixed use, which is great. Hits a lot of those targets and achieves most of the guidelines for it. Of course, you're going to see it on February third for the final reading. So we're at the, really the end of the process here. The council before you would have seen the details of this building quite a bit through the approval process. The public would have seen it as well. So we're now at the point of the process where we're getting council to approve the variances and the development permit to build the building itself. And they'll both be coming together at the February fourteenth meeting. So it is an application on three lots on North Avenue and one seventeenth. It's kind of a funny road. It's got two, two major streets it's facing. It's a low-rise apartment. It's moving to town center commercial and this will allow the commercial component on the base and redesignation in the O C P to permit that. It's about a three quarter, two thirds of a site, a two, sorry, two thirds of an acre inside the combined properties. There they are outlined in red. There's the apartment designation. You see the one property there, to the right is a commercial designation still. That'll change with time. They're outside of the Port Haney area, just. So again, we've got North Avenue to the north and south of it is one seventeenth avenue, two road frontages. We have a lot of applications of a similar nature in this area. So again, we're rezoning it to C three that'll permit the mixed use commercial. Two of the lots are already, oh, two of the lots have to be zoned. We have three properties in total. And again, it's going to be a five story, five, six story building. I think a six story with a ground floor commercial. And there's a proposal of eight thousand square feet of commercial facing North Avenue and sixty-seven units in total apartments. This is the unit breakdown. Again, there are not any three bedrooms here. They're more on the smaller scale, one bedroom, one bedroom dens and two bedrooms. But again, we're at third reading here and we're at the development permit approval stage. Some of the units are go to give credit where credit is due. He is looking at a lot of improvements to the units to make sure aging in place is possible, such as putting these light sockets eighteen inches above, a fifth, a half a foot more than they're higher. He's putting four grab bars within each of the bedrooms for a bathroom, sorry. So they've taken some effort to make them more helpful for people getting older in them, all, all the units, in fact. There is going to be underground parking on two levels. There's also going to be some planting on the roof of the underground parking that'll act as the outdoor storage area and play area for each unit. There is some parking relaxation required. They are short six stalls and visitor stalls. So they are going from fourteen to eight and they're paying for that under the bylaw, which permits that. We have a slight reduction in parking, bicycle parking from twenty-one to eighteen spaces. Again, these are all internal to the building, but they also have outside parking spaces as well for those bikes, but a bit fewer than the bylaw requires. This is the site plan showing the three lots consolidated into one. That's basically the shape of the building. It sits basically on the entire site. Which is to be expected in this urban environment. Here's the landscaping plan showing the building in the white part and then the outside decks, which are landscaped to kind of soften the appearance of the building. And then, then their play area is down below on the one. This shows you the main parking area and commercial area. So you're accessing it from the road to the south and the commercial spaces are facing on to North Avenue, the C R U's. There's an underground parking. It's two and a half, sorry, two levels. And taking advantage of the slope to insert the parking in the underground. There are elevation to the building. And we expect buildings to be on the side of it. So we don't have setbacks to that side. But they're putting some effort into creating decorative edges until a new building is placed against those edges. There's a section through the building again, showing the, the level of parking in this point, the commercial access to the rear and the units above. There is a rendering of the building that's on the, I believe, the north elevation, showing the commercial C R U's on the ground floor, landscaping above them with the buildings above them. And this is the southern view on one seventeenth. This is where the access to the underground will occur in parking. And finished off in a similar art detail brick as the front. It's always a challenge when you have two building faces like this. So again, there'll be some variances required. There's a slight reduction from the building of the front setback from six meters to five point seven. This is fine in our town center. We have a commercial and residential in the building. We have outdoor patio areas that are slightly reduced for some of the units. But overall, they meet the minimum area when it's all calculated together, but some of the units are smaller than normal. We also have a slight reduction on the width of the driveway entrance from seven point meters to six point seven. But of course, access still works for those parking stalls. And again, a little bit of short changed on the, on the bike parking from twenty-one to eighteen. Those are the location of those variances, all on the southern, really more related to the underground parking structure. Though in exchange, he's offering the replacement of the forty-eight thousand dollars for the six stalls that'll be short. And we're recommending that council approve the development variance permits and the D P on February seventeenth, when we see the zoning application coming for final. Thank you.
Motion to move this to February fourteenth. Moved by councillor Dewick, seconded by councillor Carreras. Speaker list for questions of clarification. The chair recognizes councillor Schiller.
Thank you very much, Chair. For you to staff, I recognize where we are in the process with this development. But I just wanted to ask about the parking. How many of the parking stalls in the underground parquet are for the commercial and retail portion of the building?
I think I have to ask the developer to come forward on that one. Nadine?
Yeah, well, we have sixty-eight.
Sorry, would we be able to get you to the podium so everyone can hear you, including on the recording, please?
Hi, I'm Nadine from Falcon Homes. Regarding the parking, in the secure parking area, we do have sixty-eight residential spots for the units. In the open area, there are twenty-five stalls for commercial and then the eight stalls for residential. So when commercial isn't in use, the beauty of that is that residential visitors will be able to use that outside of business hours. So in total, there will be, what's that, thirty-three spots available for commercial and visitor residential use at different points of the day.
Thanks, Nadine. Nice to meet you.
Second. Thank you.
Through Chair Test Staff, if I could just follow up, if you can just let me know, is there street? Uh, through Chair Test Staff, if I could just follow up, if you can just let me know, is there street parking available along one seventeenth as well?
There will be, yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Finished, yes. Seeing no other questions? All those in favor? Sorry, oh, that was okay. Counselor Ten. I thought you were in favor.
Um, thanks, Mr. Chair. Um, thanks to staff and similar question as the previous application. I'm respectful of where we are in the stage of the development process. I understand, I understand we're very, very close to the end here, and I'm also very concerned about the unit mix, because right now we have ninety-six percent of the units being for for people who are for households that would be fine with one bedroom, which is not representative of where our community is at, and or I think where where we need our downtown real estate to be. So I'm wondering if staff or maybe the developer would like to speak to any sort of any possibility of shifting the unit mix here at this time? And I'd also like to say that I respect all the fact that that I wasn't present for previous council decisions, and there may be things I'm not aware of.
Point of order, Councilor Dewick.
I'm cognizant of the fact that this has already been through public hearings, so when we're asking to change something that so I need to hear from the clerk what that process means.
Um, through the chair, at this point, it would be inappropriate to have some additional comments from the public, because it has already gone through public hearing, and we provided input to council on this. At this point, if there are some additional comments from the public, it will come to staff through the corporate officer, and we would direct it to the appropriate departments to navigate through.
Thank you. And to council, changing the application at this stage, I think, is what Councilor Dewick was asking about or requesting for changes at the development permit stage. Mr. Goddard?
Through the chair, the developer would like to just, I think, explain why his unit mixes as such with his experience in town. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello there, Fred Formosa here from Falcon Homes. Been up here many times, and there's new faces here, and it's nice to see. We do lots of different types of units throughout the town. We've got lots of three bedrooms in our Brickwater area. Lots of times that comes for people that are elder that would come from a bigger place, and they don't really want to get into townhouse. Families are more so not as much for a three-bedroom. But what happened with us over here is we're trying to get something more affordable. And in an area where we didn't think that three bedrooms were going to be needed as much. Usually, the three-bedroom ones that we do have at Brickwater are usually the ones that are last to go. And of course, that's because they're most expensive. They still have to pay the price per square foot of what they're worth. And but we are working with getting other units together, which are are non-rental type units, and we do have those ones when we do our projects. And then there are ones that are reduced so that families can move into those types.
Thank you, Mr. Formosa, for that clarification. Do we have any more questions? Okay. All those in favor of moving this forward to February fourteenth? That carries. Thank you, Council. Thank you, Mr. Goddard.
Thank you.
Moving on to corporate services, item seven point one, our temporary borrowing bylaw.
So, uh, thank you. So following a process that identified a number of projects that were desired for the city, we identified a funding strategy back in twenty eighteen, part of which included debt. We entered into borrowing bylaws at that time that would provide us with the authority to borrow. Those bylaws have a five-year window on them. So if we don't borrow within five years and we don't adopt a temporary borrowing bylaw, we lose our ability to borrow under those original bylaws, and we have to start that process over again. This temporary borrowing bylaw in front of you today stops that that five-year clock for three of the projects for which we have not borrowed, which means that we can, following that five-year window, still access that borrowing when we proceed with those projects. And I believe one of them has actually been completed, so it will allow us to borrow now that we we have completed it.
Thank you, Ms. Nolan. That's a perfect presentation, without take a motion to move this forward to our February fourteenth meeting. Moved by Councilor Carreras, seconded by Councilor Ten. Speakers list for questions of clarification. Chair recognizes Councilor Shiller.
Thank you, Chair. Could you just, through through Chair Test Staff, are you able to provide any information just around plans that that might be in in place around moving forward with some of these projects? Is that something that you're able to speak to?
I will defer to Ms. Richmond to speak about timing of plans. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Ms. Richmond.
Good morning, Chair and members of council. So in regards to these projects included in this bylaw, I can certainly share that one of the Silver Valley gathering places has been delivered to the community with the second one anticipated in a separate location in the Horse Hamlet area, so we will be moving ahead with that in the coming months. The Wanuk Lake canoe and kayak facility improvements is awaiting resolution of a land tenure issue. And that will, the the design is can be completed, so once that issue has been resolved, we'll be moving ahead with that one. And as you are aware and have approved, we've we've moved ahead on the ice sheet at the Planet Ice site with the application submitted to the Agricultural Land Commission.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Richmond.
Thank you.
Any other questions for members of council? Councilor Carreras, sorry, I did have you on the speakers.
That's okay. I've been, I know how hard it is to see everyone around. Just just quickly, so I've got this straight in my head. So these were projects that were approved twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, and the borrowing bylaw was done in twenty eighteen, but they haven't come to completion yet, and that's why we need to extend it.
Correct, yeah. If we don't borrow within that five-year window, we have to start that whole process to get borrowing authorized again.
Okay, so it just prevents that. So for whatever reason, they've just been, and there's, you know, COVID kind of happened to, you know, just had a major impact on everything. And so this is just to delay it so that we can continue to borrow when these things come to fruition. Okay, just want to make sure I had it straight in my brain. Thank you.
Seeing no more questions, I'll add myself to the speaker's list. Just for the public consumption, we're not borrowing, we're authorizing to borrow. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And lastly, as was kind of alluded to earlier, are there plans to initiate one of these loans before the others? Or is it dependent on the projects that Ms. Richmond had and the difficulties that the different projects are meeting right now? So whichever one comes to fruition or comes through that process first will be our first borrowing opportunity?
Short answers, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Lebo. I appreciate that, straight to the point. And I'll call the question, all those in favor of moving this to our February fourteenth meeting? That carries. Thank you, Council. Thank you to staff. Moving to community forum, do we have anyone in the room who has questions or comments to counsel? Anyone online? No one online. And with that, we'll move to adjournment. Thank you, Council and Mayor. Thank you to staff.